Tuesday, February 26th, City of Andover Council Meeting. We'll start off with roll call to my left, please.
Brian Schwan, Council Member.
Caroline Hale, Council Member.
Troy Tabert, Council Member.
Ben Lawrence, Mayor.
Clark C.R. Nelson, Council Member.
Greg Schneider, Council Member.
Mike Warrington, Council Member.
Mike Keller, Police Chief.
Donna Davis, Chief Financial Officer.
Chad Russell, Fire Chief.
Jennifer McCosland, Assistant City Administrator.
J.T. Klaus, City Attorney.
Olive Babb, Deputy City Clerk.
Susan Renner, City Clerk.
Mark Datter, City Administrator.
Rick Lanzar, Assistant Director of Public Works.
What is going on with the mics here? Did I turn too high or what? Okay, anyways, Item 3 is invocation. Mr. Toole, thank you for joining us tonight.
Thank you for having me. Let's pray. Father, we come thankful today for a beautiful day. We're thankful for this country, for the freedoms that it provides. We're thankful to live in this city and for all of those who serve, our first responders, those who work at City Hall. We recognize the blessings that you've given us. We pray a blessing tonight on this meeting, on all the decisions that are made. We thank you for your hand that continues to guide us, in Jesus' name. Amen.
Will you please stand with us for the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
Item number five this evening is the public forum. Is there anyone here that wishes to address the council? Anything. Come on up. If you come up to the podium, give your name and address for the record, please.
Diana McCann, and I live at 1006 East Paul Revere Lane in Andover, Kansas, the city now.
Almost.
Okay. And my concern is about this pit bull ordinance thing that you're supposed to vote on tonight. I've had a pit bull for three and a half, almost four years. I'm now part of the city which I didn't want to be a part of. I've lived out there for 23 years, and now the ordinances that are being voted on tonight, we have no say about, and some of them are downright ridiculous. Like, you have to have, if you have your dog in your house, you have to have your windows closed. You can't have your windows open if your pit bull's in the house.
I don't recall reading that one in there.
It's in my paperwork right over there. If I take my dog for a walk, I now have to put her on a muzzle on the streets that I've walked her for the last four years. She would think she was being abused. I have to pay $50 a year to be able to have my dog when a licensing fee in Andover is, the city is $10, spayed and neutered $15, not spayed and neutered. Why do I have to pay $50 to have my dog that I've had for four years in the county until you guys took that away from us? I'm trying to be nice, because this isn't very easy. I know you guys don't like pit bulls, but we didn't ask to be in your city. We wanted, we wanted to have our county. We didn't want to be in your city. I came to terms with all of the road. I came to terms with all the way that our neighborhood's getting torn up, and the more money that we're going to have to pay every month. But I can't come to terms with the rules that you're putting on us. I don't mind chipping my dog. That's for the safety of my dog, and if she gets lost, somebody will know who she is. My dog's never out of my yard. My dog stays in my house unless I'm home, but some people do have their dogs outside. Then they have to be in a kennel, and it has to be inspected by the police and have a padlock on it in order for them to keep their dog. If they don't follow these rules, then they get their dog taken away, and there's nothing we can do about it. That's, that's bully. That's bullying. And, and I, and I just don't understand where you're coming from. We did not ask to even be in your city. We had no choice in that either, but now you're messing with a family member of mine.
You know, we don't mind the fact that they have to be chipped and they have to be restrained, but the restrictions are way overboard. National statistics show that the number-one dog bite is from a Labrador Retriever. Now, we don't mind the fact that we love our animals, and we love our pets, and we treat them just like family, but a licensing fee that is three times higher than the standard rate and causing the muzzle and leash law, which won't even let us take them to the dog park.
Well, that, that I've come to terms with, too. We took, we took our dog to the dog park for a whole year when we first got her. We rescued her, and we took her to the dog park for the first whole year, and then all of a sudden I go to the dog park and there's a sign, "No Pit Bulls Allowed." I didn't know that there was a No Pit Bull Ordinance in Andover, the city of Andover, and I bet people who move into the city of Andover don't know that either. Who's going to tell them that? And then all of a sudden they have to get rid of their pet or sell their house? I guarantee, we won't be living out there, this is, we won't be living out there. I'll move away. I, it's ridiculous. And then you have to prove you have $100,000 insurance? I do, but why do I have to prove that to anybody? My dog's never been vicious. It's never been reported. It's never hurt anybody. The worst that it does is lick you to death.
You know, if, if something like this was going on in the high schools, you'd, you'd call it either abuse, or you'd call it bullying. When you're being told what to do with no options or choice, and basically, for lack of better terms, being shoved down your throat, it's just not fair. We've lived here 23 years. We've been a business owner in the community for 23 years.
23 years. I have a business in Andover.
And now, the city has chosen to jeopardize that, because you're going to lose homeownership and you're going to lose businesses.
So, I guess that's all I have to say. I don't know whether it matters or not, because my understanding, you're going to vote on it anyway, but.
Any replies? Is there anyone else that would like to speak? Name an address for the record, please.
Yes. Austin Renfro, 422 Quell Run Court, Andover, Kansas. I am also here to discuss the breed-specific legislation, and my hope and my belief is that when my wife and I moved to Andover three and a half years ago, that this is a wonderful community, and there has been nothing that we have seen contrary to that. Many of the people prior who were on the board, I've had wonderful discussions with the community, our cul-de-sac, our neighborhood in Green Valley. Everything has been incredible. And recently, we were stopped with our Staffordshire terrier, who we just found out, that's what he is. He was a rescue. We didn't know till Andover PD let us know about the breed-specific legislation. We got his blood work done, and that's what that reflected. He has as well been an upstanding citizen to this point, with no priors, if you will, on his record. I believe that the, the ordinance that we have in Andover is something that is lulling our community into believing that we're safer because of it, when really, we should be addressing the larger issue, which is aggressive dogs in general, and ownership of those pets. Many of the cities that surround us and in the state of Kansas, there are about 630, 640 municipalities. We are one of a descending number, that is 80. We are not in the majority. We're in the minority when it comes to this issue and this topic. Nationwide, we are seeing these repealed, rewritten, so that the larger issues are addressed. I believe as a community that we can be doing that. As the council members, that's a responsibility that falls to you, and I understand that there are a lot of things on the plate that you have, many things to address. This is something that is important. It is a matter of public safety, and I believe that we can rewrite these laws, readdress them in a way that is actually going to keep our community safe, as opposed to thinking that we're safe. Thank you for your time.
Would anyone else like to speak? Last chance. All right, we'll close the public forum and move on to Item Number 6, which is the acceptance of the agenda.
I just want to point out that we did update the agenda today to add the cell tower agreements, and we're going to have a discussion on some developers agreement related to Menelik Elementary, but.
And that's not in this? Or it is?
I think it was updated, correct.
Yeah, number 12.
Item 12 is the cell tower lease, right? And 13 is the discussion. Okay.
I'd like to make a motion that we remove Item Number 11 off the agenda tonight.
So, accept the agenda with the removal?
And accept the rest of the agenda as is.
Okay. I'll second it.
Okay. All right. Motion by Mike, seconded by Troy, to accept the agenda, with the exception of removing Item 11 from the agenda. Further discussion.
Mr. Mayor, I have a question on mic. Item 11 was the discussion on pit bull ban. You're stating you want to take it off because we've just had it?
We just had it.
Okay. Assuming that's the case, then I would have no objection to it.
We have a motion and a second. Further discussion. All in favor, say aye. Any opposed? Motion carries. Item Number 7. Do we have some awards this evening? Chief Keller, you're up.
Mr. Mayor and Council, it is my pleasure, I have a few awards to give out this evening. These are our annual awards, and I'm going to start out with Captain Buchanan. Can you come up and join me? During 2018, Captain Buck Buchanan has been responsible for coordinating and planning all special events which have taken place in the Capitol Federal Amphitheater in Andover Central Park. Since this was a brand-new venue, the spotlight was on all of these events, which would shape the policies and procedures, and set the tone for how the Andover Police Department would handle and control events at this venue. Captain Buchanan met with city personnel, as well as private promoters, to work out details and develop normal operational plans, as well as contingency operation plans to be used in the event of any type of emergency. In addition to the planning of these events, Captain Buchanan personally oversaw every event that took place in the venue during 2018 regarding law enforcement. Since Captain Buchanan is exempt employee, this often meant spending long hours without any type of monetary compensation, ensuring that the city of Andover was able to provide a first-class venue with the utmost safety and security, making Capitol Federal Amphitheater a premier outdoor venue in the Midwest. His work on the concerts and events in the amphitheater has substantially contributed to the mission of our department and improving the quality of life for our citizens in Andover. With that said, having met the requirements of our special orders, I am proud to approve Captain Buck Buchanan be awarded the Community Service Award. Captain Buchanan did not know he was getting an award this morning, to this evening.
Speech?
You want a speech?
No, it's just a pleasure and joy to work for the city. I thought I was tricking somebody else for this award tonight, or an award, so that was a good job, but thank you. It's, it's a pleasure to work for the city, so thank you.
I, I very much enjoyed that. Okay, we also have to give out our Civilian of the Year Award and our Officer of the Year Award, and so for my first one, I'd like to invite Director Tappy up here with me.
As many of you don't know, the Communication Center was down a full-time position for majority of 2018. I believe it was right at eight months. During that time, we were also short a part-time position for about two and a half months. That might not seem like a lot, but when we only have a staff of four full-time communication officers who have to work the console 24 hours a day, seven days a week, it's pretty detrimental to our small section. At this time, I would like to invite Kelly Galloway to join me. For those of you that don't know, Kelly Galloway, she is the Police Department's Records and Evidence Custodian. Some of Kelly's main jobs are to review the cases officers make and for errors before she submits them to the state. She fulfills countless requests for citizens' reports that come into the agency. She also provides reports and with pictures and videos to county attorneys and prosecutors, processes and tracks over 10,000 pieces of evidence and property in our evidence rooms, provides monthly staff, or monthly stats to the chief on department activities, works with outside vendors to troubleshoot problems that come up in the department, not to mention is the police department's go-to person for any records management questions that we have. That job description alone, without a question, makes her one of the busiest people in the Andover Police Department. In 2018, I asked Kelly to do all of her regular job, but I took away 60 hours for her to accomplish those in. I then replaced those 60 hours with rotating 12-hour shifts, not only working day shift, but night shift, sometimes in the same week. Kelly didn't work the same schedule for more than one week in a row the entire eight months. Pretty much whatever I threw at her, she took. As complicated and as stressful as Kelly's schedule was, she never complained. Now, don't get me wrong, there was a lot of "you've got to be kidding me" looks, but she would smile and agree to change her schedule to help us out. Through all the wrenches that I threw at her and the added stress that I gave to Kelly in 2018.
Which was a lot.
A lot. Every time I saw her, she would greet me with a smile and tell me a story about one of her children. Kelly stepped up and went above and beyond her position in Records and Evidence Clerk to make sure our department had someone at the dispatching console at all times. Kelly's hard work and dedication oftentimes goes unnoticed in the background of everyone's busy schedules and meeting the needs of our department. And with all this and much more that I did not mention tonight, I nominated Kelly Galloway for the 2018 Civilian of the Year. Kelly also thought I was getting this award.
Yes, so we tricked her to get her here.
We have one more award, and for this one, I'd like to invite Captain Schroeder up here.
Mayor Lawrence, City Council, I'm Captain Joe Schroeder, the Operations Commander for the Police Department, and it is my honor tonight to introduce you to the 2018 Officer of the Year for the Andover Police Department. The uniqueness of this award is that their peers submit them for this award and explain why it is they feel they should get it. And this year, I would like to invite Master Police Officer Tia Smith to join me. During 2018, MPO Smith has demonstrated her commitment to the mission of the Andover Police Department through her involvement in the community, both on and off duty. MPO Smith is active in a group called Wichita's Littlest Heroes, and spends a lot of her personal time with the organization, helping children with special needs or other medical issues. In addition, MPO Smith has been involved with identifying families in need during the holidays. For the last two Christmas seasons, MPO Smith has identified families and gone out of her way to assist them. Despite no longer being an SRO, MPO Smith continues to involve herself in SRO projects and does all this on top of her regular patrol duties. During National Night Out, MPO Smith worked hard to engage the children and build strong community bonds, which ultimately placed the department in a better light within the community. MPO Smith has used her computer skills to assist her fellow officers, creating flyers for the Police and Fire Festival, National Night Out, Drug Interdiction, and Drug Education and Passenger Safety Events. She has also assisted officers in creating PowerPoint presentations used both in the community and in the schools. She is constantly working on new ideas to make her department better. She is attentive to the needs of her fellow officers and the community at large. The most telling proof of how officers feel about MPO Smith was given to me during the debate of who the Officer of the Year should be. One of her coworkers described MPO Smith as a person who finds solutions to the problems that she sees. One officer even stated, "Tia won't let an opportunity go to make a difference." His opinion of the committee, by unanimous vote, that MPO Smith be presented the 2018 Officer of the Year Award.
I'm fairly certain Captain Schroeder here thinks recently I've been the biggest pain in his butt, more than doing any good, but I am very honored to receive this and continue to work for this great community and be a part of it, and I really appreciate all the support that I get, not only from the community, but my family, who has been hiding in the back, and the police department in general. So, thank you guys so much for making this possible. Appreciate it.
It's getting more and more difficult to get them here without them knowing they're the winners. It's even more difficult to get their families here without them knowing about it, but I got to be honest, in the 10 or 12 years that we've been doing this, I don't think we've had a better pool of candidates this year, that are more worthy than the recipients we've had this year.
Good stuff, Chief. We are going to move on to Item Number 8. I'm sorry, did you say that the Senior Center won't be available this evening?
Yes, she's rescheduled till March the 12th. They had a flood issue at the Senior Center.
Uh-oh.
Dishwasher, new dishwasher not hooked up right or something, yeah.
Nice. So, we'll start off with Caring and Sharing.
This is kind of our, our annual accountability report. We, Caring and Sharing has existed in different forms for about 20 years, and we've become much more collaborative in the last two or three years. I have Michelle Carlini and Captain Rocky Craig from the Fire Department as representative of the as representative of the wide collaboration across the community. We are so thankful for not just St. Vincent de Paul, but for all of those who are recruited dozens and literally hundreds every year. Our partnership includes police, fire, EMS, the nine chaplains that serve with me, that serve those organizations, as well as the hospital, as well as schools. We get emails from counselors about families who have needs for Christmas, about kids who need eyeglasses, and we provide those at no cost. We're thankful that the community is coming together and that they're aware of the assistance that's available and that we can provide those funds. In 2018, we were blessed with a significant increase in giving. And our commitment is that when people, especially for the Christmas program, when people give to provide a Christmas meal or Christmas gifts for kids, we take all of those funds and use them for Christmas specifically. We try not to overlap that. And so on the sheet that I gave you, that I provided, we took in a little over $6,800 last year that was specifically targeted for Christmas, and we spent a little over that. Just to make sure that we are accountable for the funds that come in, we've also got churches that are contributing, we have individuals that contribute, and we try to make sure that we use that for the purpose in which it was intended.
The only thing I wanted to add is one of the things this year we did, we started an adoptive family, so people made substantial donations. And what we did with that money is we provided every child that was part of the program got clothing this year. So we had sweatpants, and we had leggings, and we had t-shirts and all that kind of stuff. So this year it became more about how we really could help these families, and that's how we hope to continue to grow. It's not just about giving a kid a toy and saying, "Goodbye, we don't want to see you again." It's more about providing these families with a little bit of dignity and pride and a relationship that makes a big difference in their lives. So that's kind of what Caring and Sharing has turned into. We most recently had one of the school counselors call us because she had two kids going to school that were wearing the same clothes every day. And she, they were trying to help, but they didn't have the resources. So we were able to provide them with gift cards and clothing, so these boys are no longer going to school without being ashamed. So that's the beauty of Caring and Sharing, is we are what we say we are, so that's all I wanted to add.
No, that's a great example of what we're trying to do, whether it's a stranded motorist who needs an overnight stay, a spouse who accompanies a patient to the hospital and they need a place to stay for a couple of nights while a heart procedure is being done. We're getting, we get these requests from everywhere. And because we have more churches and more people participating, we have the funds to be able to help a family who came in after Christmas and said, "We have these needs and we're wearing the same clothes." We've set up voucher systems with the hotel, with Walmart Optical. So it makes it absolutely painless for the child who needs glasses or for the stranded motorist. They just go, the police and fire department both have vouchers that they can give out, no questions asked, and then they call me and I go pay for the room. So it's an honor to represent Andover in such a way. All of the chaplains are empowered to do this. And just, it's pretty much the summary. Are there any questions that you might have about what we do or where it comes from? All right. Thank you for letting us represent our community.
All right, we have another presentation by Family Life Center Safe House.
Good evening, I'm Darla Carter, and I'm the Executive Director of the Family Life Center Safe House. I want to start off with thanking you for your, the support you've given us in the past. And I just want to share a little bit about what the Safe House is. We are a shelter and an outreach program for victims of domestic violence and sexual assault. So we have a shelter, it's based out of El Dorado, but we serve all of Butler County. We also serve Elk and Chautauqua County. Last year, in 2018, we sheltered 34 women and 31 children that... So, and those were, we had, 30 of them were domestic violence women and 30 were domestic violence children. There were two sexual assault and women and two sexual, or one sexual assault child, and then the other one were stalking that were in shelter. We also have a court advocacy, and what that is, is that we help with protection orders. And so they can come in and get a protection order, and that, we follow them through that process and everything. With our court advocacy, we helped 257 people with filing those protection orders last year. We have police response advocacy, we have sexual assault advocacy, support group, we have a teen dating violence program. That teen dating violence, or teen dating violence program is an interactive role-playing activity that presents youth with, the activity is, opens conversation and raises awareness about dating violence along with red flags on unhealthy relationships. We presented that to 640 students in our service area. Our, we have, in our support, or in our shelter, we moved 51 people, 51 women and children into a different housing situation. So they either went into permanent housing, or they moved into a different living situation. So those did not go back to their former abusive relationships. We had to turn away 53 victims because we were full. So that's quite a bit of people that we had to turn away due to being full. We had 471 crisis calls. 429 of those were domestic violence calls, 25 were sexual assault calls, and 17 of them were stalking calls. We do presentations and community awareness. We, that's what I do now, I'm giving community awareness and everything. We have a lot of different programs. We go out into the community and we have fundraisers to help the program stay. That's how we fund, I'm sorry, I'm getting kind of... We have grants that we, that's how we do the shelter, is we have grants. We have three grants from the Governor's Grants Program, and we have one grant from the Attorney General's Office. Those help support salaries. We also have a grant from the Kansas Housing Corporation, and that helps maintain the shelter. And then we get grants from like, from you guys, from the cities that helps with the shelter and with salaries too. So I appreciate the support that you've given us in the past and any support that you can give us in the future. Do you have any questions for me?
I guess I have one. Is there a...
Okay, I'm sorry.
Did my voice come from over there?
Yes, it did.
Yeah, so if, is there a specific, I had called SCARF this week about donating some stuff, and they had pointed out for them that they needed sweatpants and sweatshirts and jackets for medium and large-sized adults, because a lot of older children are... So is there a, what would you say would be some of the things that as a community, if the community was listening tonight and you needed something for you, whether it be clothing or items? What are things that you are in need of at this point?
A lot of the ladies that are in shelter, when they move out on their own, they come with nothing. I mean, so we like household items. So when they move out, we, a lot of the church ladies, this is what I kind of tell them that they can do, is they have a kitchen trash can, and they can fill it with toilet paper, paper towels, cleaning supplies, mop, broom, you know, all that kind of stuff, because those things are expensive to start off with. So that's something that the church ladies can do as a circle. Yes, sweatpants, t-shirts, sweat jackets, those things are really good too. Children's underwear and socks, women's underwear and socks, various sizes, those are good too. We don't have a lot of men in shelter, so I, I mean, those things that, you know, we don't really need or anything. We're a house, so any cleaning supplies, Ziploc bags, toilet paper, paper towels, laundry soap. I mean, just, when you think when you go to Walmart, what do you buy for your house? That's what we are. We're just a house, but we're just bigger.
Perfect, thank you.
Thank you for your presentation this evening.
All right, thank you.
All right, looks like we're moving on to item number nine. There's the Consent Agenda, items 9.1 through 9.6.
Mr. Mayor, I would move to approve the Consent Agenda items 9.1 through 9.6 as presented.
Second.
Motion by CR, second by Brian, to approve the Consent Agenda. Further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Item number 10, An Ordnance Amending, Ordnance 1662. Would you like me to handle this discussion, or?
Go ahead.
Say what?
I just have some questions, but whenever you're ready.
All right, go on.
Chief, would it, you put this together for us for this, is that correct? Yeah? You or JT?
Well, it's a cooperative effort. JT is the one that writes the final ordinance, yes.
Oh, that's why it's all in legalese, is that right? So the first question is, where did this, where did the wording for this come from? Because I know that you didn't, or you guys didn't just think of it off the top of your head, so where was this taken from?
Most of it came out of the original ordinance back in early, early 2000, when we first put the ban in place, and they had a grandfather clause. Most of it came out of there.
Okay, so...
And to further that, explain, it also came out of a discussion from the council during the workshop late last year, I believe. And then we put it all down in writing, and JT prepared an ordinance.
And maybe I can provide a little help with that. So the ordinance looks longer than it actually is. If you had a pit bull in Andover before they were banned, we have always had rules to which they were subject. In addition, they're allowed, if they're a certified ADA service dog, an animal that assists a human being. And so to that extent, there has always been exceptions. So the manner in which the ordinance was drafted, just to help everybody along, was to insert a new exception, simply to allow the animals that are owned and housed in an area when it is annexed and subjected basically to the same restrictions we had had previously. So most of this is not new information, although it was necessary to appear in the ordinance to make it work in the code. So we just did that. We created the exception for these animals and instructed by the council, and then I think the chief provided some other guidance, but I didn't want anyone thinking that all of this was new.
So in reading the exceptions, and they're pretty short, so I will read them in a second. The idea was that anyone that's grandfathered in and has a pit bull would need to have their, I guess, home and/or property set up in a way that the pit bull could not get loose, is my understanding. But when it comes to the very specifics of this, I can certainly see the exact points that were brought up earlier, including the windows, by the way. So again, it's really short, so I'm gonna go ahead and read this. "No person, no person shall permit a pit bull dog to go outside its kennel or pen unless such dog is securely leashed with a leash no longer than four feet in length." I mean, that's pretty straightforward. If you have a dog that's outside, then it would need to be leashed. Seems like pretty short, but I get it. "No person shall permit a pit bull dog to be kept on a chain rope or other type of leash outside its kennel or pen unless a person is physically in control of the leash." So what that's saying is that if the pit bull is outside, you can't put it on one of the posts that are in the ground and on a leash, that you would actually have to have the leash in hand. Is that correct? Okay. "Such dogs may not be leashed to an inanimate object such as trees, posts, or buildings. In addition, all pit bull, all pit bull dogs on a leash outside the animal's kennel must be muzzled by a muzzling device sufficient to prevent such dog from biting persons or other animals." So it sounds like what that's stating is if the dog is outside at all, it'll be muzzled, even if it's in its own yard. Yeah? That sound right, or am I reading that incorrectly?
Can I get where you're reading from?
Sure. Section, yeah, Section F.
You're reading from F1?
Yep. Thank you.
The muzzling device applies to animals on a leash.
Okay, all right.
So in theory, it could be kept outside in a kennel or any number of means that wouldn't require it to be muzzled.
So if it's in a dog run outside, it would not have to be muzzled, is that correct?
That's correct.
Okay, I guess I didn't under, I thought it was outside the house, but okay. "So confinement, all pit bull dogs shall be securely confined indoors or in a securely enclosed and locked pen or kennel." So when it says the word "and" there, that's saying if it's in the house, it also has to be in a kennel. Is that correct? It can't just run loose in the house.
No, that's, that's not what it means. I believe it says they'll be securely confined indoors, or if they're not in the house, then in an enclosed and locked pen or kennel.
Okay, so I read it as, "All pit bull dogs shall be securely confined indoors," or, okay, I read that incorrectly. Good, okay, so "or in a securely enclosed or locked pen or kennel," which means outside. Such, good music. "Such pen, kennel, or structure must have secure sides and a secure top." Okay, it's gotta be something that's not gonna allow the pit bull to run away. "All structures used to confine pit bull dogs must be locked with a key or combination lock when such animals are within the structure." So that's stating if it's outside and you have a dog run, you have to put a locking lock on the dog run. Is that correct? Is that what that's stating?
That's correct.
So that is exactly what was mentioned earlier.
To prevent someone from releasing the dog who doesn't know.
Someone walking into their yard, opening the kennel. Okay. "Such structure must have secure bottom, no less than," it's got sizing. "All structures erected to house pit bulls must comply with all zoning and building, of course. All structures must be adequately lighted and ventilated." I don't think you need to have to put a light on a dog run, but is that what that means? No?
Are you reading from confinement?
Yep, the last line of confinement.
Yeah, certainly if it had a roof and four walls, it would have to be adequately lighted, but sunlight would be adequate for an open-air structure.
Okay. And then the second item, or number three, says, "No pit bull dog shall be, may be kept on a porch, patio, or in any part of a house or structure that would allow the dog to exit such building on its own volition. In addition, no such animal may be kept in a house or structure when the windows are open or when screen windows or screen doors are the only obstacles preventing the dog from exiting the structure." The idea, I'm sure, is to make sure that a dog can't pop out the window and go attack someone. The idea, I'm sure, is to make sure that a dog can't pop out the window and go attack someone. Be the, the goal of that.
Again, this, I didn't draft this, it existed before I got here, but yes, that's what I think the goal would be, a simple screen would not stop the dog.
Okay, nor would necessarily a glass window, by the way, if you, if it was upset enough to be able to run through that. So, those, I think, are the, the main grievances that were brought up earlier. So, if we're gonna vote on this tonight, I, I guess I'm curious to know what we think about those individual pieces, if we wanna leave them in or take them out.
Mr. Taber, just for clarification, everything you just read is already in the ordinance. There's no change to the parts you've read, that's nothing new, that's what you've, I believe about a year ago?
So, a year ago, we voted to allow pit bulls in the city?
No, they fall, those were the exceptions that fall under section E. The exceptions, prohibitions of subsection B shall not apply, too. And there's three clauses there that were allowed. And, uh, basically vet darians, uh, pe- people passing through to a vet, there's some exceptions there, and those were it. The only thing that's on, uh, the only thing new, um, that's existing law right now. What is new is section four up above F. That is the new section that was drafted, that's the amendment to the ordinance.
Sure, just allowing-
For annexation.
For annexation, that's the only part that's-
I completely get that, and I guess I'm just more finely reading some of this in a way that I didn't before, and I just wanna make sure that as a council, when we vote on this tonight, that everyone knows what the heck's in it.
I, I just wanna make sure you realize that's, that is current law, uh, in, in Andover, what you're reading.
Okay, so, I, I guess a, a question would be, one, if that's fine with everybody, fine. Two, if we're going to carve out this, then understand it's not just for the new people that it was carved out for today, um, meaning the, the annexation, but the, the wording was already there. It wasn't made just for you guys. So, that's my point, and no one has to respond to me at all if they don't want to, but that's certainly my question. That was brought up last night when we briefly discussed it, too. There's another, I mean, there's another fee that's even more than that for some other thing, but I don't remember what it was you mentioned.
That's, um, what was discussed earlier about having other laws in place. We do have a vicious dog ordinance in place, that's over and above this. And that verbiage comes out of the, um, dangerous, dangerous dog, vicious dog ordinance. Uh, there are, there are several classifications of dogs, um, are dangerous dogs, the lowest being the potentially dangerous. Uh, a potentially dangerous, uh, dog, when deemed, requires a fifty dollar a year registration. The other classifications that are higher, more dangerous, require a three hundred dollar registration. And that was, so those were taken out of a, uh, out of a separate ordinance in the city that's already in existence. Think you approved that-
Last year.
December, maybe? Um, but you, I believe you approved that one last year, that's, we, we do have, many times they say that we should have an ordinance to protect us from dangerous animals, not just breed specific. We do have both in place.
Okay, but the point was that dollar amount for the pit bulls isn't the max already, the max is three hundred a year, and this is-
This, we, we deem this, and, and this ordinance deemed it to be a potentially dangerous dog. As I said, it's the lowest classification out of the dangerous dog ordinance. Uh, and, and that comes with the fifty dollar registration, uh, annual versus anything above that has a three hundred dollar registration.
I'd like to respond, I think, to, uh, Troy's comments. We, uh, I, I guess it was last year, we had a lengthy series of meetings, both here at City Hall and workshop about what we need to do. And we listened to, uh, experts either by way of case law, of which we've read, and articles by other experts as to, uh, pit bulls and their dangerous propensities. I, I wanna also recognize, is it Austin Renfro, is that your name?
Yes, sir.
Uh, you did a very artful job of telling us, uh, your feelings on that, and I, I think it makes them good. And, and, uh, I'm gonna support the ordinance that we have this evening, but that's not to say that at some point, we can't go back and, uh, either as case law changes and, uh, communities feel differently than what we are today, that we can't change such a thing. Uh, I, we all love dogs, and, and I've had a dog for a long, long time. Uh, and I, I don't like this as much as, uh, as anyone else. But I think we, for the protection of the community today, uh, I still support it. And, and my understanding is that we've added this, uh, section four having to do with the grandfathering for the new annexation that we're about to hopefully enter into. And I think it's fair and reasonable, and for those reasons, uh, I'm gonna support the same.
Ma'am, uh, you can't, you can't talk from the audience. If you wanna say something, I will let you have another turn at the podium.
Can we have that?
This is not a public forum. I, would you like to speak?
I don't know, I mean, but maybe, go ahead.
That's a yes or a no?
She's figure.
Would you like to speak? Name and address for the record, please.
My name is Megan, and I live at five thirty South Highland Drive. Um, you know, one of the civilian, or citizens, I'm sorry, um, asked you guys last summer if you deemed them a reasonably dan- dangerous and want the ban to remain based on factual evidence or opinion, and you guys couldn't even answer her question. I mean, you finally answered, but you answered with opinion, and only three of you had answered. So, and, you know, I personally don't think, you know, it's fair for the people who are now being added to the city have to deal with this, I mean, that's your problem, that, you know, that you don't, you know, support this breed, and you wanna-
We are trying to create an exception to allow those pit bulls that are being annexed, annexed into the city. That's what this is trying to do, the alternative is to do nothing. And when the day and time comes, when they're officially in the city limits of Andover, we'll go issue them a citation, that's the alternative.
Well, I don't agree with the confinement requirements and the muzzling, I mean, and what, I do have a question, though. What about if, if these owners have, um, pretty secured, you know, privacy fences with, uh, a padlock? Would that, um, would that, I guess, include in the, uh, the confinement requirements?
I think that's what this council's here to decide, whether they agree with the, uh, items and terms contained within this ordinance, or they don't.
Because I just don't, you know, with having the pit bulls confined like that and having them muzzled, I'm just, my concerns are that it might stress the dog out, and it may, they may develop, some of them may develop, you know, behavior problems. I mean, we all know somebody who owns a dog that's, you know, tethered for too long every day, or who's in a kennel for too long, and then they wonder why their dog all of a sudden has behavioral problems, you know? So, that's kinda one of my concerns about the whole issue. I don't know why we can't just grandfather them in and, you know, not have these, um, unnecessary restrictions on them. And I mean, it's still discriminating against the dog and the owners, or you're still choosing to decriminalize, um, or I mean, sorry, not decriminalize, um, demonizing, you know, the dogs and the owners, and making them criminals. So, by having these laws.
Anything else?
Thank you. I guess I'm good, unless somebody else wants to speak.
Thank you.
Thank you for your time.
Mr. Mayor.
Caroline.
I, I struggle with this, and I think everybody on this bench knows I struggle with it. I'm an animal lover, and, um, I understand that there are pit bulls that seem to be loving wonderful pets, and, uh, it's unfortunate that, um, what has happened to the breed. I'm old enough that I remember hearing and reading stories about Sergeant Stubby, and I grew up with Buster Brown, and yes, the pit bull was the standard animal for that breed. And it's unfortunate that what has happened in this country, where people then took that breed and, and did some of the fighting and killing things that they've done with that breed, and that's all unfortunate, because I, I don't believe, I know, that in this country, the breed did not have the potential or the problems that exist today. So, that breaks my heart. On the other hand, I know that as much as they can be very cute, if I were going out to pick a dog, I would not pick one that was in the pit bull family. So, that, that bothers me, and what else bothers me about it is though other dogs can be aggressive and attack, the damage that is done by the pit bull, we study after study and report after report. It's like, we had, we may have had seventeen dog bites in the city last year, if I have the number right, but fourteen? Okay, but all-
In, in seventeen, but fourteen.
Okay, but all of the ones that were bit, and I think it was three, and of course, the pit bulls shouldn't have been here anyway. But anyway, in, anytime the pit bull bit someone, they were hospitalized, they had to go to the hospital. The damage is severe. Um, that bothers me, I, I don't, you can't predict. I've known people that have had pit bulls that said they're loving wonderful, and then something snapped, and somebody was severely injured by it, and they were shocked, that, that was never gonna happen with their pit bulls. So, that bothers me. I have a sister that's have, I'm, I'm an animal lover, she's an animal lover. She does all this volunteer work in Arizona, and they, the rescue dogs, and they handle a lot of the pit bulls. She has fallen in love with some of the pit bulls that she works with, and that she walks, she's a dog wa-, she's walking them four days a week, and yet, about a month and a half ago, she's out with one of these pit bulls that she has fallen in love with, and one of the other walkers had another dog, and for whatever reason, these dogs that have been together many times got into it. And my sister blames herself, she says, "I, I know better," but she tried to pull them apart, got her hand torn up really bad. Luckily, she, she, you know, still has a hand and didn't lose it, and, and she didn't get mauled and drugged, and, and it wasn't a case of not releasing, but she was severely hurt and did have to have a lot of stitches and work on it. And to this day, she blames herself, she, she does not hate the pit bull breed, and she would work with them again. She's braver than me, but I'm just saying, I, I, it just frightens me when her experience, and I have talked to her about what we're going through in this town, and how it bothers me. And she said, "I understand that." She said, "When we adopt them out, we're very careful with people, that they know what they're getting, and they cannot go to families that have children under the age of fourteen or tw-." I mean, it, in Arizona, at least, the, the rescues and the humanes are being very careful about how they're letting these animals go out into families. And I think it's regretful if we aren't doing the same thing here, that people aren't being told that you, you have a breed that, you know, is in this potential situation, and, you know, it, it breaks my heart. I, I know that I've also said that I'm not keen on some of the extra requirements, but honestly, this is only going to be allowed for, um, the family that moves in with the pit bull. So, I, I feel bad, like, if they have a fenced yard, that they can't run and play with their own dog, because now they obviously can't take them to the dog park. So, so we're saying that someone can't even play contained within, uh, their own fenced yard if they have the, if they're, have the pit bull?
Under what's in front of you, that's correct, or what is under the current law?
Okay. I, I personally, I, I'm not saying I'm gonna do away with the pit bull breed, but I personally think that we are being a little too restrictive with what we are giving to these people. That I, I, I do see the fact that now they have an animal that's gonna be muzzled practically every moment, and it's not used to it at all, and, you know, so, so my, my heartbreak little piece will go that far. So, I don't think if-
You're suggesting in alternative terms?
Well, I-
Contained within the ordinance?
I would suggest that we look at loosening this up again, we're not saying we're allowing pit bulls, but we're saying for this situation where we have forced people into, you know, we've-
Like I said, the only difference is it's, it's, it's creating, uh, an alternative to allow people who are annexed into the city limits of Andor, not just moved in somewhere, annexed unilaterally or otherwise, an opportunity to keep their pit bulls until the life of that dog has expired. So, if you don't like the provisions within that, or if you don't like the idea of that at all, you need to come up with an alternative here, or, or, you know, tell us which ones you don't like, and see if we can reach an agreement on-
Okay.
What provisions there should be.
That's what I'm saying, I'm not, I'm, I'm just saying that these people who, again, have had no choice in the matter, and they've had this animal, I, I don't like the fact that the, the pit bull has to be muzzled all the time. You're, we're calling it potentially dangerous, well, just like any other dog in the community, if it exhibits something that makes it become dangerous, then we can go further with that, would be my thought. I also don't like the fact that, again, I would want them to have a fenced yard, I would not want them letting their dog run loose, um, you know, in an open yard. But as long as they have an enclosed yard, I would want that animal to be able to run and get some exercise. Again, you know, what we've set up does sound like abuse to a pet. I mean, I would hate it if I put my pet in those circumstances, is all I'm saying. So, is there, you, you know, that's it for me. Those are the kinds of things that I would like to see changed in this. I wouldn't want to have them be constantly muzzled.
Anyone else?
Caroline, I-
Don't get me wrong, I, I still am concerned about the breed, but I'm trying to do something here to help someone that's, yeah.
Um, I agree with everything you said, and, and what we've been talking about for months on this. Um, the only thing that, that I would consider myself changing is the muzzle part, as long as they have a fenced yard.
To be clear, that, so there's no confusion, the muzzle is required when the animal is on a leash, which means it has to be held by a person, that, that the theory-
So, not in their yard?
It did say they had to be-
It's just, just on the leash, so that if the person lets go of it, or it gets away from the person, it has a muzzle. I, I'm not suggesting anything about requirements, I just want everybody to under-
I was assuming it was in the yard also.
Well, your, your point is still, your point is still a good one, um, because right now, the enclosure must contain a secure top attached to the sides, so, um, a, a fence would not be a sufficient enclosure for a pit bull. It, it could be if you deleted the language, "and a secure top attached to the sides." It must be a fence with posts that go at least two foot into the ground, and, and, and that would meet the enclosure requirement. But I didn't want anybody, seemed to be some confusion that a dog in the outdoors or in a secure facility, uh, if it met the requirements of a secure facility, needed to be muzzled, because, uh, I, I don't think that was what the current ordinance says. Uh, but I, but I do think that what you're questioning, which I think is appropriate, is that the, the fence would essentially require a top on it, and, and something across the top. And, uh, the ordinance does say that, so.
Right, I, I took that to be, they were talking about a kennel, dog run type thing, smaller facility, not something that an animal can get exercise in, like a yard, or bigger that they could run in, around in. And when I was reading it, I took it to be that they couldn't run around loose in a yard, that they had to be on a leash with a muzzle. Now, maybe I took that wrong, if somebody wants to look back and read that again, and maybe you have it in your head.
Do you like me to read that again?
I think, uh, the intent, and I'm, and I can see where, we could probably clarify this a little bit, but the intent was that the animal was, whenever it was off property, um, yeah, off property, that it would be secured with a leash and a muzzle. Um, I, I think the way this reads here, it appears it would be that way, the way the ordinance has been, even in a yard, if it was outside its pen. I think we could probably clarify that a little better.
Right, okay, so-
I might also ask the police chief about-
I might also ask the police chief about the comment that our attorney made about excluding the secure top attached to the sides. Would you, would you concur with that?
I think if we could include a secure fenced area rather than a pen, if we would clarify that, that might be a, and again, this is just for the animals that are annexed into.
Right, yeah.
We could probably clarify that.
I would support those two changes.
Right, I'm living, I'm getting closer to living with it. I'm trying to think if there was any other one that, the fifty dollar one bothered me, you know that, you and I had that discussion months ago.
That just comes out of the other ordinance that for every other dog, that we would probably want a secure fence, so that would probably include a lock, so someone can't come in, because we've had that happen, come in, let an animal out without the owners even knowing.
Actually, that's the same ordinance, or the same wording for if you have a swimming pool, by the way.
Right.
Where you're supposed to have a lock on your fence, it's not just a dog, so.
Microchipping is good for all animals, so I don't bother that, I don't mind that one. And the insurance, if you've got insurance, then like you said, that's not gonna be a problem, but.
When we're clarifying secure fence, are we also talking about the height of the
I'm looking at the legal- I think that's actually an excellent point. If you no longer require a secure top, you'd then wanna consider what height of the fence deters the animal. And most standard privacy fences are six foot tall, so that would be what you would do there. If you're, the theory of this original ordinance passed way back when was that these animals wouldn't be outside, you'd keep them indoors. If you took them outside on a leash you were just holding, you would have to have it muzzled. Actually, the requirements that you don't tether it or tie it down are actually, believe it or not, for the benefit of the animal, not for the benefit of people. And so I think Councilmember Warrington is right. You would wanna make two changes to the confinement if you were going to allow them in the yard. You would first of all, want to say that when they're not indoors, they must be securely enclosed and locked in a pen, kennel, or yard. I think you'd wanna add or yard to the language. And I think you would wanna say, except when leashed and muzzled, such pen or kennel must be, must have secure sides of at least six feet. And then delete the secured attached to the top. To be clear, what I think that would do is I think that would allow the animal to be in a structure that has no top and is essentially a yard. Where the challenge will come in is that it now requires that it have a secure bottom. And this is because the dogs, of course, can dig under the fence. And so you'll need to decide how you, you know, how you wanna deal with that. Some people have fences, quite frankly, with the secure bottom, a concrete ledge under the fence. I'm one of those guys. But I'm just telling you that you would want to decide what to do about the secure bottom because I think most people's fence do not, do not have a-
Secure bottom.
A secure bottom. I think that the dogs can probably burrow or dig or otherwise get out from under the fence.
JT, can we, there's another part on here that it was talking about, it would be inspected by the chief of police. If they have a fence, what could we add that in there as well to the secured fence to be inspected by the police department? And that would, that would check the secure bottom? Does that make sense?
I don't know why we'd, well, I'd leave that to the police chief, but I hate to now get into an inspection issue.
They're already there.
It's there already. They have to come out and check the secure.
Okay. The more we get awry, the more we, it becomes very difficult to, we're attempting to redraft a section of this ordinance this evening, right? And right now, we now have three different little sections.
Just minor.
What we tried to do in a workshop and thus what is brought to you, trying to define the specifics of what you wanted.
I'm all in favor of making it reasonable and better and yet consistent with public safety. And if we can make these three changes, I would think that we'd all be better off.
Mr. Mayor, may I ask a question to the lady in the audience?
Go right ahead.
Yeah.
But if she's replying, I'd like her to reply at the podium.
Do you have a fenced yard?
We have a four foot fence right now, but we will get a six foot fence.
Okay.
Privacy.
Okay.
I have no problem with that.
All right.
I do have a problem with having to have my windows closed when she's in the house, though.
If you have a fence, I don't think that would, that would matter anymore.
But my front windows will be open to the front yard.
Oh, which is not fenced, is that what you're saying?
Yeah.
Well, I think we're just trying, we're trying hard to satisfy the people that are coming into our city as annexed. And this is, you know, changing some wording to try to actually help you. So.
For some reason, it doesn't feel that way. When I can't have my windows open, I have to have a muzzle on her if I take her for a walk. I can't take her for a walk and put a muzzle on her, she'll think I'm abusing her. So I guess I'll just take her to Wichita, take her for a walk. Then I have to get through the city with her in my car.
I don't think they've trapped you down on that one yet. I would like to comment about the windows too, though. I mean, come on, what's, could we say a limit that you can't have your windows over six inches or over eight inches open or something? I mean-
I think, I think the intent of that-
Somebody has air conditioning, you know.
No one is gonna go around and look and see if someone's window's cracked and we've got a lot of other things to do than that. I think there's some, we have to use a little bit of common sense here that if a window is standing wide open and it's three feet wide and anybody can crawl through it, that's probably not a secure, but I believe we can probably word that. So it's a little more of what you're considering. I think if we add the clause in there that where an animal is unable to escape from, something along that lines.
Yeah. Caroline, I have been to some people's homes just for my, you know, personal work and I've come up to their house and, you know, their door was open, but they had their screen door that was closed. And I was very thankful that it was more than just a screen. Otherwise, it, I probably would have been damaged pretty good because the door moved. So I see the point, but I think we can, like Chief was saying, we can reword that a little bit, you know, to have the, maybe the window cracked or something, wherever that wording comes to.
We would just want it worded so that it was obvious that the intent there is so the animal cannot escape.
Yeah.
Again, something that's six, eight inches, probably even a foot tall, the animal, but, you know, whatever gets reasonable. I just don't want people to have to not be able to open the window.
That's gonna be way too ambiguous.
I think if we stick with what the police chief said-
I think you better listen to your city attorney first.
And we're, we're getting out of bounds. But I'm all in favor of trying to make this within reason. My problem is if we're gonna have to defer this for another month to get it worded, I don't know if that's gonna be good for anybody.
We're, we're still months away.
I think the annexation's official, official on April first.
April.
Mr. Mayor, if I may offer a suggestion. So the real purpose of the ordinance was to create an exception to allow people to keep their dog. And the areas you're talking about now are both in F2 and F3 regarding how it has to be confined, which already exists. It may assist you in adopting the ordinance as written tonight, which really just creates the exemption for the animal to allow it to exist. And then the chief and I could come back to you with simple amendments to F2 and F3 regarding confinement. That would be more in line with what you've discussed this evening. Those things are in this ordinance because they needed to be for it to make sense. I'm gonna be honest with you, that we probably could have hidden them and said, "F shall say as written" or words to that effect. But as we're always instructed by the mayor to keep an open and transparent government, I think this was good discussion. My suggestion would be if you wanna create the exemption, to do it with this ordinance and instruct us to come back with amendments to F2 and F3 as it relates to confinement that's more in line with what you're thinking about. And you may not pass those new confinement releases or the diminution of those requirements. You may or may not pass them, but you at least you'll have created the exemption for the animal, if that's what you would like to do.
I'd rather see the entire-
I think these people in the audience would too.
We have months before, before that occurs. Oh, you do what you want.
I would prefer to see something in writing that I can clearly understand, consistent with what we've said this evening.
Have we had enough of a discussion so that you know the things that concern at least some of us, I guess, or?
Yes, Councilmember Hale, the only question I would ask and the only confusion I still have is, I agreed with the chief's opinion that if you only had screens on the back of your house, but you had a secure locked six foot privacy fence around the back of your house, you could leave your windows open or your screens open or whatever you wanted to do. There is the issue of what you would like us to do on the, on the front of the house as it relates to exiting, because I haven't, I haven't heard a consensus on that item yet. That's the only vagary that I feel like I couldn't, I couldn't draft something that I'd be assured would make everyone happy.
I still think that if what the police chief has said, that so that the animal, the dog cannot get out of that opening, it's fine.
I do too.
And then that's, I guess will be a matter of fact down the road.
Yep.
And I realize that this leaves it up to some discretion things, but I think you all are real good about working on that and coming up with.
I don't have a problem with that. Just on clarification though, under number one, I thought the intent, and we'd need to clean that up a little bit, is that if the animal to be leashed and muzzled is when it's off property.
Right.
Correct? Is your intent?
Yeah.
Yes, yes.
So you're tabling item 10. Next meeting.
Next meeting would be fine.
March 12th.
March the 12th? Is that what you said? And I just wanted you to, or you both, to collaborate on redrafting some of the provisions. Right? Can I get a motion to table that item then?
So move.
Second.
By CR, second by Caroline, to table item 10. Further discussion. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. We're gonna, let's see, we removed item 11, we'll go straight into 12, Central Park cell tower lease.
Mr. Mayor, in front of you is the Sixth Amendment to the tower lease agreement with New Singular Wireless for Tower in Central Park. This, this new lease will generate us approximately a thousand dollars a month. I think I've put in some detail that over the years, our cell tower leases have gone from in the tens of thousands to, you know, up to seventy thousand dollars. And just as a reminder, this money plus our fireworks tent money and liquor tax money is what's paying for the debt service on the amphitheater, currently paying for the debt service on the lodge, the golf, the golf course clubhouse, the gazebo, which most of those are coming off this year. And then we'll get into the larger part of the amphitheater debt service. But that's as we talked about previously, that we weren't going to per se use property tax money, but use some of these fees, and this is one of them. So we've been in agreement and these leases come periodically. Our attorney reviews them and of course, our consultant who works with us at the telecom company reviews them as well. I certainly withstand for any questions.
Mr. Mayor, I move to approve Sixth Amendment to Tower Lease Agreement with New Singular Wireless PCS LLC for lease payments related to the Prairie Creek Tower and authorize the mayor to sign such lease agreement.
I'll second it.
Second by Greg, second by Mike, to approve the Central Park cell tower lease as presented. Further discussion. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Item 13.
Mr. Mayor, this is just kind of an advisory type discussion right now, but I just want you to know where we're at as we continue on with these school bond issues. We believe we've come up with the infrastructure requirements for the new Metalark Elementary School on 13th and 159th. And those improvements are going to be less than a half a million dollars that the school district will be involved in financing. There is a approximately million dollar sewer improvement that the city at large is paying for as part of our agreement with the school district on these various bond issues and the infrastructure financing. But at this time, we'd like to just tell you that we'll be bringing a developer's agreement to you that does not include financial guarantees. We believe that the amount of money, the CFO and I believe the amount of money, plus the fact that we're talking about an elementary school that we have little doubt is going to be built and completed, will be, will be fine and they'll make their special assessment payments as, as were required. So the combination of both, we're just trying to avoid a little bit of paperwork on everybody's behalf for a project that should be done within the next year and a half or so, I think is reasonable.
For USD 385.
Right.
No other educational institutions right now, currently?
Right, that's, I mean, it's, we don't have anything we're pondering right at this point, so we'd have to keep those things in mind as they come along.
Guess we're down to member items.
Anything tonight?
Caroline?
Nothing, no.
Troy?
Just one thought that we've talked about, I think, before regarding sales tax and potential state change. And I believe I had read recently that they're talking about potentially changing sales tax for groceries.
SB 22 suggested a small reduction in sales tax specifically to groceries.
And I know that we as a city use a 1% sales tax to help pay for the roads and I just, I guess I'm unsure of what impact that might have on that and other things that we-
I've actually talked with Council President Nelson and the mayor last week about this. We need to keep track of the legislation. I would point out that previous legislation has allowed cities to exempt themselves from that requirement. And I think it's, you know, that's a good thing. Every municipality needs to decide what's in their financial best interest and that would be something you guys would have to ponder if that exemption is allowed, whether or not you wanna go with what the state has done or allow your city to still collect that revenue on groceries.
Okay, well, I, I get it, man. It's the one tax that hurts, I would say, the poor the most would be, or those with less money would be groceries. So I'm for it personally. I just know that, you know, as managing a city, it would be very impactful on what we do. So gotta think about both sides of it. That's all.
CR?
A couple things, just on Troy's thing. That, I think that's one of the specific items I raise. It's something we really need to keep track of and make sure that we all either have input or at least we know what's happening. On the pit bull item, as painful as it is to delve into changing ordinances and so forth, I think we as a board should be thankful that the improvements I think that we're gonna make. And I appreciate the audience coming out here. And I know it's no fun sitting out there dying slowly yourself. And specifically, Austin, you did a wonderful job on articulately- on articulately describing what it is you want without unreasonable emotion. I just thought it was very well done. And I hope that we'll continue to work on this. I think it'll be a better ordinance as a result of what we've done this evening. And that's it.
Greg?
Mike?
I have a few things. First, first of all, Susan had sent us out the census things that we could pull up and see what's going on. And I did get that to work earlier. And so, it was kind of cool to see that when I clicked on our 67002, it's showing the 2017 census that we're at 14,491. So, I'm assuming that's correct?
That includes people outside the city limits, obviously.
Yeah.
And there's, we all have the same zip code within a certain area, so, you know. But, yeah, last we checked, we were just over 13,000. But, yeah, our area's grown.
It's growing pretty quickly, yeah. And then, and I clicked on the school system, and the school system has 25,355 living in the school system. I mean, usually you look at your city and see what all is coming into your city, who's all supporting your city. And we're having over 25,000 people that are somehow supporting our city. So, we're not a small city anymore. So, it's, when you have that many people that have something to do with our city, that's kind of cool. Then I looked at Butler County. There's almost 67,000 people in the entire county, which means that we're almost 22% of the county, just our city or our zip code. So, that's also pretty significant as well. So, when we're looking at things down the road of how our city compares and portions that we have or people that we have sitting on boards, like the school, not the school board, but the Butler Community College boards and stuff like that, that we need to have more presence, so...
We are underrepresented.
Yeah, that's right. We are very, being, you know, a fifth of the entire county, just right here. Another thing, I was at the, thank you, Mr. Mayor, for putting me on the library board.
You're welcome.
And so, just a, we did, I did not vote, but I was there to listen to their vote, and they did keep the three books that were in question in the same spot, even though I couldn't, you know, really say my opinion. I listened, and it was some very good arguments on both sides. And I appreciate everyone being very civil in that. So, that was impressive. Last thing, I was wondering if Mark could update us on the cellphone tower, the mini-tower things, and what's going on with the state with that?
I have not had a communication on that recently, and I don't know if JT has heard anything. I think the strongest thing is whether or not there's going to be legislation to disallow franchise agreements. And, you know, we did send up testimony up there essentially saying that we thought franchise agreements were critical to coming up with solutions to problems at varying levels. But I do need to get back with the league and see if there's been many more progress on that particular issue or changes. But we've been heard on it. Hopefully, it's taken into consideration.
Isn't that a federal thing, not a state thing?
I think the state, you could negotiate franchise agreements. I think there are boundaries with what the federal government is willing to allow. But I think they were actually looking at just saying, well, state-wise, you couldn't have one at all, you know, was one of the suggestions. So the FCC was allowing you to have them up to a certain extent, and then the state was even going to consider preempting that.
I feel like I saw something that Trump had mentioned this week about 5G and even 6G, whatever that is. And he put it kind of at the forefront. And while it might be a funny message, it's not funny, because to me, it sounds like what he's trying to do is force it.
And I had heard, I know there's a lot of support for the 5G, you know, that's a powerful lobby in Washington. It's a powerful lobby in Topeka. And, you know, unfortunately, I believe our interests conflict somewhat in terms of maintaining the aesthetics of our community and trying to keep these things under control. I'm sure it can be worked out. That's why I think agreements are such a good way to go in trying to develop, because every community's unique in what they need.
Thanks.
Steph have anything else? Donna?
You saw this advisory budget schedule. I just want to make sure we'll be talking about some budget matters at the next meeting in March. But just notice that deadline for governing body priorities of... Put my glasses on, what, April 5th there? Is that what that says, Donna? Yeah, April 5th. So, that's, it's very helpful to get those by that deadline. So if there's some extra work we need to do, typically, the council knows the large projects we have outstanding. And I don't very often get $5 million requests. They're more like $5,000 or $10,000 requests. But it's still helpful to know in advance what the governing body, some of the things they're interested in and expenditures.
Corner of Vandover Road in Central, and beautiful.
I know, that's your...
All right, just so you know, that's, in case you didn't...
Anything else?
Mayor, I wanted to invite all the council members. Thursday, at 3 o'clock at the police department, we're going to be introducing our new canine. We'll be releasing his name at that time also.
All right, let's go.
Make a motion to adjourn.
Second.
Second by Troy, second by Caroline. Further discussion. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? We are adjourned.